The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
We'll call this regular council meeting on February 13th to order. First of all, under Presentations from Kin Canada, we have a proclamation. We have Chrissy Wallman with us this evening. We have Raylene Fever and Adam Beck. Thank you so much for attending. Did you want to say a few words? Oh, there's one more I missed. Who's that with Raylene?
Robin Sullivan.
Robin Sullivan. Sorry, Robin. Would you like to say a few words before we read the proclamation?
I'm okay.
Okay, so we have a man with a few words and three women with a few words. Wow. We've got to mark that one down, eh, ladies? Anyway, I'll go ahead and read that out. So, whereas Kin Canada has been a vibrant, responsible, all-Canadian service, organized, devoted to serving communities across Canada since 1920, whereas Kin Canada Clubs, their members, have demonstrated excellence, pride, integrity, inclusiveness, and compassion in their pursuit of further enriching our community. Whereas Kin Canada is celebrating its 103rd anniversary on February 20th, 2020, be it therefore resolved, I, Roy Leibig, Mayor of the City of Estevan in the province of Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim Kin Canada Day on Monday, February 20th, 2023, and the week of February 19th to the 25th, 2023, as Kin Canada Week, and encourage our community to recognize Kin members who give so generously of their time for the betterment of our region. So, thank you all for coming this evening, and you're more than welcome to stay. You know, I ask this all the time, very few, for some reason, take me up on it, but again, you're more than welcome, and maybe at this time we'll answer questions or comments from members of council. Councilor Groba.
Thank you, worship. Thank you all for coming today, and thank you for the great work that you do in our community. I was just wondering, Day of Kindness, I just had Dave Elliott call me today and let me know that this week, Day of Kindness, but I thought he said Saturday, but is it today?
No, it is Saturday.
It is Saturday, okay. And so, yes, hopefully some of you will be coming by to play cards or do something with the seniors, and we look forward to that. So, again, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Groba. Councilor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. Just want to ask you, this is a good chance for you to do a little recruitment speech. You want to just tell us what people would have to do and how they'd contact to join up?
Absolutely. We're always looking for new members, both for the Kinsmen and Canet Clubs. It takes a lot of volunteer hours to do some of the things we do for the city, and finding those people is always a struggle. So, if anybody does want to come out and help join us and make Estevan a better place to live for everybody, then I would encourage them to contact either the Canets or the Kinsmen through our Facebook pages, and then you can find us on there, and we would love to have you out for a meeting.
Okay, thank you for that, Adam. Appreciate it. And again, we do appreciate all of the work that you do in our community. You guys do an awesome job. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Cernik?
Thank you, worship. Is there anything special being put on during Kin Week, like to attend or anything like that?
Other than, I guess, the Day of Kindness, which would kick off this Saturday, we'll have both clubs out throughout the city, doing multiple gestures of kindness and unexpected things you may find, so that's kind of where we're going to start. As far as anything else going on, I don't know if we have anything else planned yet, but I guess you could check our page, and we would update you with anything else going on.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Again, if not, thank you all so much for the work that you do. Much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving forward, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you, Councilor Wallezer, seconded by, I guess I'll go with a gentleman, Councilor Clark. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on January 23rd? Councilor Groba? Councilor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have the Innovation Council Councilor Ford, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Sure, your worship. Just to add to this, this little letter that we wrote up, we had just applied for our Intelligent Community Designation, so it's the same thing that we did last year. It's just our ability to be able to brag about our community and say how we're digitally ready for anything that would come in our economy, economic development, just a way to say that, you know, this is what we're doing in our community. It's not anything that we're adding to our community or doing anything. It's just saying, you know what, this is what we're doing. It's, the ICF, the place that we apply through, is actually, it's a global network of cities and communities who actually are networking together to help solve our problems, helping, you know, discuss various things. And I attended a conference last year, it was virtual, and it's actually surprising how many cities in the world and communities in the world who are having the same issues as we are. And it's the same as when we go to any conference, you network with people, and you realize that, oh, these people are going through some of the same problems that we are, labor shortages, economic development problems, and everything. So, this is just a way for us to be able to connect with other people in the world and to be able to discuss any of our initiatives and kind of share what we're doing and maybe piggyback off of others' initiatives. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford. And it's true, a lot of the new economic development is based on innovation, so they work hand in hand, and it's very important to recognize that. So, thank you for that. Did we have a motion to accept that? Thank you. Councilor Frank, seconded by, Councilor Cernik, all in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have the Coldest Night of the Year Request for a Permit to Walk, February 25th. This is from Shelley Boyce. As in the previous two years, we choose Life Ministry, seeking a letter of approval from the City of Estevan for our Coldest Night of the Year Walk-a-Thon. The CNOY organization requires some sort of approval. Therefore, I'm requesting a formal letter from you explaining that we are free to walk around the city. The walk will take place on February 25th. There is a 2-kilometer and a 5-kilometer route for people to choose from. Both routes will begin and end at 1202 Second Street, which is the Estevan Gospel Chapel. We will be keeping clear of traffic and do not require any sort of streets blocked off or anything like that. The CNOY national event is a way to raise awareness of the hurting, hungry, and homeless in our communities, and to raise funds and support for our nonprofit. Below is a link to the website if you want to read more. Plus, I'm always available to answer any questions you may have. Regards, Shelley Boyce, Choose Life Ministry, Carnduff Saskatchewan. So, what's the wish of council? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I think we should accept this, and it would just be a good reminder to tell everyone to make sure your sidewalks are cleared and to make sure you get some salt out, because there will be people using the sidewalks that night and having a walk.
Okay, thank you for that. So, you're making a motion that we move forward? Have we got a second? Thank you. Councilor Cernik? Any questions, comments, anything you'd like to add? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from the Hudson Bay Route Association, the membership fees for 2023. And what's the wish of council on this? Usually in the past, we have paid the $300. This is the route all the way up to Churchill, and I know as the Northwest Passage thaws, they're looking at more and more goods going that route once they get the track fixed. And I think the federal government, they've put $150 billion, and they fixed that rail line up through the Muskeggs, so I think it's pretty possible right now. And the province of Manitoba has also put in $73.8 million. So, go ahead, Councilor Frank.
Thanks, your worship. No, I think it's good, and I like what they're advocating for, so definitely would make the motion to accept. The one question I have is, do we have anybody attending any of their meetings or AGM at all? And if not...
You know, not lately, but that's a good point. Maybe we could have our active person, Tony, if you wouldn't mind. Again, if you can spare the time to go to the AGM, that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, somebody from council to be able to go and attend and get a better picture of what they're doing, make use of our voice and our membership, so, but I will approve it, or make the motion to approve it.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second? Thank you, Councilor Cernik.
Yeah, I'll second that, and I kind of had the same thoughts of kind of an update on what they're actually up to and all that sort of stuff, because it would be a good way to get coal out of the area from this part of the province, so hopefully we can put that in their ears, for sure.
Okay, thank you for that. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you very much. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the Minutes of January 17th. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those? Thank you, Councilor Groba, seconded by Councilor Wallezer. Any questions or comments? Councilor Groba.
Thank you, worship. I am the city rep on that board. I just wanted to point out that they bought a new button maker, which was purchased in memory of Stan Zimmerman with a donation that they received from the Arm of Benson in his memory. And they also have a new dollhouse that was added to the children's section, and it's amazing, actually, how many kids are taking advantage of the different things the library has to offer. And they also decided that they will be putting up a sign in the Kinsmen Christmas card laying next year, so.
Oh, great.
A lot of exciting things at the library, and again, if you don't have a library card, we encourage you to get one.
Thank you, Councilor Groba. They do a lot of good things for our community and for the newcomers as well. They do a tremendous amount of good, so that's a good thing. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from the Tax Assessor, the 23 Board Appointment. Now, Trudy, did you want to speak to that, or? No? Okay, I can, I can, no problem. I don't want to put you at the spot. I'll, I'll, I'll do that. Okay, 2023 Border Revision Appointment. Norrisasque Board Services informed the City of Estevan on December 10th, 2022, they will no longer be available to provide border revision services to the City of Estevan for '23. I would like to retain the services provided by Western Municipal Consulting for '23. Resolutions are required to proceed for the Board of Revision Service for '23. Appointment of the Board that the City of Estevan appoints Western Municipal Consulting Limited to manage the Board of Revision process for the term January 1st, '23 through December 31st, '23. Remuneration is set out in the Western Municipal Consulting Limited Fee Schedule, with the following to serve as members of the Board of Revision: Tim LaFrenier, Mark Waschuck, Gordon Parkinson, Dave Thompson, Wayne Adams, Jeff Hutton, Dave Guernsey, Murray Dean, and Stu Demmons. The Chair shall be responsible for naming no fewer than three members for the hearing of any matter. Where the Chair does not include themselves among the appointees, the members appointed for a hearing shall determine the Chair of that hearing from among their numbers. Appointment of the Secretary that the City of Estevan appoints Linda Stephen with Western Municipal Consulting Limited as Secretary to the Border Revision for the term of January 1st, '23 through to December 31st, '23. Remuneration is set out in Western Municipal Consulting Limited Fee Schedule. If Leanna Stephen is unable to perform secretarial functions for reasons which may include scheduling difficulties, the Secretary may appoint a delegate to perform administrative functions and may appoint a recording secretary for the purposes of any hearing. Respectfully submitted, Trina Seben. So, could we have a motion to accept Western Municipal Consulting, please, and all that that entails? Thank you, Councilor Groba, seconded by, Councilor Clark. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from the Program Manager, Affinity Walking Track Policy. Now, I know we've had quite a bit of feedback with our manager on the policies and procedures, and I know council has also had time to go over this, so what is the wish of council on this procedure? Go ahead, Councilor Wallezer, please.
Thank you, your worship. I think this is an important first step, that it really tries to meet all the groups and what their unique needs are, and I want to reassure people that it's not set in stone that as we explore this policy, as we put it into use, we still want feedback from the community, and we can always make tweaks later on, but I would approve this policy as my recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wallezer. Appreciate that. And like you say, it's a living, breathing document. It can be changed as times demand it to be changed. Have we got a second? Or thank you, Councilor Cernik?
And just a question to you. I noticed that, are we, is this going to be like signage inside the building? I guess it doesn't really say that anywhere.
Now, that's a very good point. I think it would follow city manager that we will put up signage so people totally understand the policy.
Thank you, worship, to Councilor Cernik. If council approves this policy, we'll make sure that there's proper signage in all areas of the track and make sure that's enforceable for whatever we put into place.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions, further questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Frank.
Thanks, your worship. I know just in some of the brainstorming conversation around this, the plan, not such plan, but one of the recommendations was to include Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., as well as the, this just refers to Mondays and Thursdays from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. being quiet time, but it was kind of being proposed as being throughout the daytime as well. Is that just error, or was that kind of changed by management? Just curious to know.
City manager, I don't know if we're aware of that.
Thank you, Councilor Frank. I will have to go back and clarify on that. I know there was very little minor hockey during the daytimes during the week.
Yeah, and that was why.
I think that was where it came from, but I can definitely follow up to that.
Yeah, and that's very fair, and it might not even be necessary, because there's so little of it. That was a little bit of a thought there, so, and I'm happy either way, because we can always adjust, but yeah, nope, that's, I just wanted to see if they could include that.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Councilor Groba.
Thank you, worship. I actually think this is going to be very hard to enforce or track. I think it's going to cause a lot more confusion at the rink with definitely people who don't already enjoy young kids playing with hockey sticks, or they're small little mini sticks and stuff like that. I think this is going to just create some confusion there. Also, in part of this, it says, "If a game is scheduled for these days in affinity, EMHA will be allowed to access the track for a maximum of 15-minute warm-up only." And then in the next paragraph, it says, "Limit of all pre-game warm-up times on track to a maximum of 30 minutes." So, I think what they're trying to do is talk about on the quiet days, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. would be a maximum of 15, but then literally in the next sentence, it says, "Limit all pre-game warm-up times on track to a maximum of 30 minutes." I think right there, it's already going to start some confusion, because people are going to start going to the 30 minutes, so, yeah. I think the majority might go with this policy, but I personally am not in favor of making the changes, so.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to weigh in? Seeing no one, ready for the motion? All in favor? Carrie? Let it be noted, Councilor Groba is against, city clerk? Okay, thank you for that. Moving forward, Executive Reports, we have from the Water Services Manager, the Water Quality Report for January of '23. We're meeting all of the parameters. Since we put that pipeline in from Rafferty, everything looks great. We're meeting all of the requirements or exceeding them, so that is absolutely great. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that report? Thank you. Councilor Clark, seconded by, Councilor Ford. Any questions or comments? Councilor?
Thanks, your worship. I see we're advertising for a water treatment plant for, for person. Is that a new position, or is that a replacement?
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Because that's something we had done on a trial basis for a six-month period to see if it warranted. It was, has proved very beneficial, so now it just has to be posted as a full-time for that to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, we have the Building Inspector, from the Building Inspector, the Building Permit Report for January of '23. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you, Councilor Clark, seconded by, the Council Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Next, we have, under Introduction of Bylaws, we have Bylaw 2023-2067, Estevan Art Gallery and Museum Terms of Reference for the First Reading, and we have with us this evening, Catherine Gillis. Catherine, thank you for coming. Would you like to sit in front of the mic so that you can answer any questions? And perhaps, if you would like, maybe give us a brief overview why these changes are taking place? Just hit the Talk button there, if you would.
Okay.
You got her. Thanks.
So, essentially, for the most part, although it is a little bit more onerous as far as length goes, they are essentially just an update to the bylaw that presently exists, which is Bylaw 2011-1864. I'm not certain if you have that as a point of reference, but essentially, the bylaw as, the art gallery as it exists through that bylaw presently is just a little bit dated as far as a few things that we wanted to update. So, for example, the, the board as it sits now is, is required to be, or to be, consists of certain members within the community, and it's been quite some time, in fact, I think certainly since my time on the board, that that just hasn't existed. And by basically just virtue of interest and involvement, all of these, like the Art Council is an example, are their own entity, and so typically, there hasn't been an overlap as far as membership goes. Certainly, those are welcome, but it's just a matter of updating the document to be more indicative of what we've seen as far as the structure of the board. So, we've simplified that dramatically, essentially to continue to include, obviously, the city council that sits on the board, but then simply just created sort of that member at large, just for, just general inclusivity as far as who would like to join the board, because starting to mandate other agencies is just difficult because of the volunteer nature of the positions. Beyond that, the, the term of board members, that structure was to stay the same. What we've done is outline just sort of general board member duties, so it's a little bit more visible, both to the community as well as to prospective members, as to what each member is responsible for, what the expectation is of any members, and then specifically, what is the expectation of any of the executive branch of our Board of Directors. There's also been an offered change in this set of bylaws to create essentially what I would probably easily, or best characterize as a leadership ladder. So, effectively, for the last little bit, we've seen, there's been a number of us that have been on the board for quite some time, and we see consistent, the same individuals are holding the executive positions, which is fine, but, but at the same time, we want to see progression in the board, we want to see progression in the leadership. With that, it gives, it gives the opportunity for the membership of the board to cycle. It also gives the opportunity for new ideas, fresh perspectives, to, to increase through that leadership ladder. The ladder also essentially creates the structure that someone would enter as a treasurer secretary, so they would have, that first year of that executive ladder would give a really good indication as to how the, how the board is structured, how it runs, the financial perspective of it, and then allows an individual with that base knowledge to then move up the leadership ladder, to then be at the higher stages within the ladder for the community and outreach for the gallery. There is then, by nature of that addition, there's also additions to the bylaw that just creates the appropriate mechanism and structure to allow for, in the event of somebody leaving that ladder, how do we call for new membership, new, how do we fill those vacancies, and what is the appropriate timeline to fill those vacancies? So, a lot of that is, is sort of structured and procedural in that way. Beyond that, the majority of the bylaw is, as far as the intention, the, oh, use your words, just sort of the, the vision of, and the, of the, or of the gallery is all structured to be the same. It's still meant to be, obviously, the cultural perspective of the, the community, that outreach for art, culture, history within the gallery and the museum. That all is structured almost, if not identically, certainly just, it's some editorial changes, but it's really just to create a different structure for the board, for its longevity, as well as an appropriate mechanism to cycle the board members and create that inclusion and that inclusivity as far as who should be joining the board and, and making sure that it appropriate reflects what we've seen. The only other, I think, main edit is that in some of the fundraising efforts that we've made, a lot of them are, have the requirement for licensing and that through the SLGA. One of their requirements is that we have a dissolution clause within our bylaws that appropriately indicates that if there are any funds remaining in a charity account for the art gallery in the event of its dissolution, that those funds are disseminated to other charitable organizations within the community based on their policies, and that's part of their licensing requirement, so we're just looking for that update. So, again, so this document properly reflects what we need for the gallery to continue to fundraise and to continue to operate.
Okay, well, thank you, Catherine. Obviously, you spent a lot of time on this, and you didn't charge us, so for that, I have to thank you. And the only thing I had on this, 21, the boards hereby authorize to accept on behalf of the city any gifts, bequests, or donations, objects of art. Now, that would be probably on behalf of the gallery itself, so.
Well, that's, yeah, it's been, I mean, it is somewhat of a similar policy that existed in the previous bylaw, but essentially, the drafting of it, the purpose of the drafting is to allow for, if anyone who is, you know, culturally proficient or has art that they wish to essentially will to the city or, or donate to the city, their, the expectation would likely be that they would probably approach the gallery directly and, and approach either a board member or likely, more practically, probably our director curator. So, we just wanted to appropriately identify that by virtue of the bylaw and how the EAGM exists as a whole, anything that we would accept would obviously be city property, but it's, I would assume very likely that anybody offering those gifts would either do it in, if they are, if they are alive, they're doing it directly with the director curator for ease, but if it's certainly a bequest and a will or any kind of testamentary document, that it would likely be willed to the gallery as an entity, even though we don't actually own that property, it would be the property of the city.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Catherine. We'll open the floor for questions and comments. Councilor Ford and Councilor Groba.
Thanks, your worship. Number 21 kind of sparked a question in my head when I was reading it as well. In an act of reconciliation, various museums and art galleries across the country are returning indigenous artifacts to their actual indigenous communities and First Nation communities. Are there any artifacts or things in the art gallery that are of note that we should be looking at at returning or anything like that?
That would probably be a better question for, this should be directed at the, like at our director curator. I think I misspeak to suggest what we, we have presently, not to my knowledge. Certainly, truth and reconciliation, and, and not only that, the appropriate steps as far as returning any entities, but also just the education piece that falls with that is part of the mission statement of the art gallery as it is presently, so it's, it's sort of a living document within our policies, procedures, and mission statements, so, but I, I think Amber would be best to answer that. Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford. Councilor Groba?
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Catherine, because I too want to acknowledge all the work that you put into doing this, because it's very well done. And also, just to clarify, in 21, Catherine also added the last part, that the city shall have final approval on where any such de-accessed items are to be returned or relocated. So, it's not, it's basically, yes, the curator would be the person to accept it, but then if she was to decide to, no longer of use to the art gallery, then it would actually come to the city council for final say if it was something of value.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Groba, Councilor Clark? Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Vroba, Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks for coming tonight. Just in number five and six, you talk about the council member attending all board meetings and the member, that they shall attend. Is there anything, if any of the people that don't attend, is there, is there a way to, if, if the president never, never attended for so many weeks, is there a way to recall them, or is it just?
Yeah, I believe it's addressed in a later section, that there is, that there is powers to, I just haven't, I don't immediately.
This one's.
Yeah, so there's a specific, there's a specific, 17 deals directly with attendance, but also with absence of greater than a one-third of the meetings, and then there's a mechanism within that to call for and seek resignation from that board member. And that existed, I believe, previously in the, in the old one. I don't think I edited that too terribly.
Okay, is that all you had, Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Frank, then Counselor Vroba.
Thanks, Your Worship. Sorry, we're grilling you so hard on this one, Catherine, after all your hard work.
You're being grilled, like.
Tough questions for you.
I live for it, guys, I live for it.
I was gonna say, you don't answer tough questions ever, so it's good you get to come to us. This one is actually just in regards, the only one that sparked my interest was 29, just in the dissolution, which is of course something we hope never happens anyways. But just under 29D, just in terms of where it goes to the charitable organization, which I think is great and have no interest. The only one I was wondering is if we could add, or if anybody'd be interested in that, where the city would have final say over at least the portion of it that was city funding that perhaps happens. And I know that that's not necessarily an issue at the moment, but some, we know that some of our third-party groups do end up with healthier bank accounts, so, you know, they've held reserves or things like that from city funding, because that was tax dollars. That would be the thing that I know would come across our mind. Obviously, we'd have our one-board seat, but I'm wondering if just, if it's worth putting a line in there. I'm trying to think how we would probably address that, but just making sure that we do address that, anything that city, the city, the city funds that have come to you, should you have held any reserve amounts, would, at least the city would have control where it goes, or some say, and how it goes, or final say.
Catherine, do you think that doesn't, or, Your Worship, do you not think that falls under 29B? Any property owned by the city of Estevan in the possession of the Estevan Art Gallery Museum shall be returned to the city. So, that would include funds.
Yeah, I think certainly it could be, like, it would encompass, I think it would arguably be encompassed in that. I think the other reality is traditionally, and I appreciate this as year-to-year, but traditionally, what is asked for of the city in our budgeting each year is largely operating costs. So, theoretically, like practically speaking, if there was a dissolution of the art gallery, there would be, it would likely be that those funds had been allocated. The really, the main key for that was we didn't want, when we were doing this edit, we were, we wanted to address any possible pushback we might get from a number of different agencies. So, we kept everything as general as we could, but also acknowledged the fact that we do get a lot of funding from cultural entities, grants, and they have their own set of requirements as far as how funds are being issued, and we didn't want any, because we ask for so much already from the city, as well as we rely so heavily on third-party granting, we didn't want any, or I certainly didn't want any wording that would preclude us or inhibit our ability to seek third-party granting, because their concern is, we would take their money and not appropriately give it back so that they could refund it to, or redistribute it amongst other cultural groups. So, that's sort of why it's directly addressed. But I think that the cities, again, if there were anything, the cities could appropriately be addressed in that general.
Yeah, and that's very much, I appreciate that. And as you mentioned, I kind of thought that, and we're not really in that situation. Of course, obviously, not in the situation of your closing, and also not in the situation of you having a large amount of money, just making sure in future years that should some of that change, just making sure we're covered. But yeah, I can agree with number two letters, so you will cover that, so let's get.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Frank, Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that with the Saskatchewan Game Authority, you can't actually even get a license without having that clause in for the dissolution. And it would only, because when you get your SLGA license, you have to actually have a separate lottery account or, you know, fundraising account, I believe if they call it lottery account, and any money in there must be spent on exactly what you apply for in the license. So, that's what they're talking about, is let's say we fundraised $10,000. We said we were going to do it for operating or for a certain exhibit, and then it was, the art gallery, museum are no longer. Basically, the $10,000 would have to go to another eligible charity. It could not go back to the city or could not go back to any other reasoning. So, I was just also going to make the motion to accept this, but I wanted to see first if Counselor.
Well, Easir had something else.
Okay, Counsel Well-Easer?
I just wanted, I just wanted very quickly to also address the other practical reality that was, went into that, the consideration of that, the drafting of that, is by virtue of the way that the art gallery exists, we operate, we are in fact a non-for-profit corporation. However, we do operate by virtue obviously of the city largely on your funding, but also through all of your assets, like our, obviously, our building is a city-owned asset. So, the other thing that was, I was mindful of in that drafting is, in a practical situation where a dissolution might arise, there's, the only way I could see that coming out of would be one of essentially two ways, and one would be that the city has mandated its closure for some reason, or obviously, it's no longer in a position where it's running, even though it's not a profit organization, it's not running profitably enough to continue to operate. If that's the case, then what debts would exist for the art gallery and museum would likely largely be exclusively city property-related and/or city utility-related. So, by virtue of that, those debts would be the city's debts, which would mean that appropriately the city funding, if there's any available, should address those concerns first and foremost before we moved on to anyone else's funding.
Good point. Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Well-Easer?
Thank you, Your Worship, and that was what I wanted to echo. It's very clear that it is just the bank account for the license, so I think those concerns have been well addressed, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you again, Catherine, for coming, and the motion really might as well be the bylaw itself. I'll read it out. A bylaw of the city of Estevan to provide for the appointment of the Estevan Art Gallery and Museum Board and to define its powers and duties, first reading. So, we've got that, City Clerk, we've got Counselor Vroba and Counselor Well-Easer. Any more discussion, questions, comments for members of council? If not, all in favor? Carried? Thank you very much, and thank you, Catherine. Obviously, you did very well. You convinced everybody. So, this has been a good day in court.
That's right. That doesn't happen all the time, so.
I can imagine. Thank you again for coming. Okay, next, under public hearings and reports, we have none. And then next, giving notice, we have another proclamation, Wear Red Canada Day, February 13th. So, thank you, City Clerk, for reminding us to wear some red today. Whereas heart disease is the number-one killer of women worldwide and the leading cause of premature death for Canadian women, a fact unknown to many women and their health care providers. And whereas, the Canadian Women's Heart Health Alliance is an organization of volunteer health professionals and patients working hard to improve women's heart health. And whereas, Wear Red Canada Day is celebrated annually to raise awareness for all Canadians, but especially Canadian women, to be mindful, curious, and proactive in the management of their heart health and wellness. And whereas, we want to see better prevention, diagnosis, and care, and fewer women dying prematurely from heart disease. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Royal Albert, to hereby proclaim February 13th, 2023, as Wear Red Canada Day in the city of Estevan, and ask our citizens to recognize the same. Okay, thank you, City Clerk.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, could we have a motion for that, please, to accept, thank you, by two men, ladies. Thank you, Counsel Cernic and Counselor Frank, and along with the rest of the men in the room, we are concerned about your little hearts, and we want you to take care of them, okay? Especially with Valentine's Day just around the corner. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, consideration of bylaws. We have Bylaw 2023-2066, Bylaw Authorizing Dispensing with Mailing of Assessment Notices. Now, we, a few weeks ago, gave first reading, and we had very little feedback, right, City Manager?
No feedback in my office, Your Worship.
No feedback at all? City Treasurer, any feedback? None? Okay, so that means that everyone is happy with that. So, if it's okay with council, we will proceed with second and third reading of Bylaw 2023-2066. So, at this point, I will ask for a second reading of Bylaw 2023-2066, Bylaw Authorizing Dispensing with Mailing of Assessment Notices. Thank you, Counsel Cernic, seconded by Counselor Ford. At this point, I ask if there's any questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried? Thank you. Now, we'll move forward with third reading, an adoption for use of Bylaw 2023-2066, Bylaw Authoring Dispensing with Mailing of Assessment Notices. Third reading, please. Thank you, Counsel Clark, seconded by Counselor Well-Easer. All in favor? Carried. Thank you so much. Inquiries. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. I was just curious, I mean, we've done a great job of our streets, but unfortunately, the melt is on. So, I did have somebody send me a picture and say that they were basically out chipping away, trying to get the flow down their street. So, there is a lot of driveways where they're flooding at the bottom, and I was just wondering, do we encourage the citizens to go out and scrape out around the manholes and stuff like, is that something we want?
We, we do have a lot of our citizens, Counselor Vroba, if they're healthy and in good shape and have the opportunity and the time to spend doing that, we appreciate that. And we have quite a few that do that. On the other hand, if they're of ill health and unable to do that or unwilling, then if they would call, you know, City Hall, and we'll make sure that those manholes are cleared for the water to run.
That was actually what I was wondering about, is that if they phoned in and gave the location of the manhole that was covered by ice, that we would send a unit out and they would just make sure, like, again, it may not happen immediately, but in their schedule, they would at least put that location on?
Yeah, we do go around with a crew for the storm sewer and make sure that they're unplugged when the water does start running. Otherwise, as you know, then we have issues. So, yeah, we do that.
Right.
So, if they would let us know some areas that are, we could go to them first, perhaps.
Perfect. Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, because I was going to encourage them to chip it away themselves if they wanted to, but then I thought, I wonder if we wanted people chipping away at the manhole covers, so.
Yeah, they can't hurt much.
Can't hurt much, perfect. Life is good.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Of course, I just want to send a big congratulations to the curling community and their volunteers for what they did in those two, two weeks that were on and what a great event they brought to the city, and I just think they all need to be acknowledged as doing a great job, so I'd like to pass that on.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counsel Clark. They did a fabulous job. Devon Fornwald, his wife Helen, and their whole crew, along with volunteers. We had unbelievable volunteers again. I have to stress, we have the best volunteers in Western Canada. We were hoping for 140. We got 190 volunteers. God bless them, everyone. They did a great job. So, thank you for bringing that up. Counselor Well-Easer?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just wanting to wish everyone a happy family day, long weekend, and remind everyone that if you don't have plans to travel out of town, it's the perfect weekend to be a local tourist and just check out all the changes that are happening in town and the events being offered.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Counsel Well-Easer, and please be careful, because when you're out and about with the melting and the ice, we don't want anyone to fall. City Clerk's daughter at Calgary slipped crossing the street, broke her leg just the other day. So, this time of year, we have to be aware of that. Counsel Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I could have brought this up in my innovation ramblings before, but just a reminder that Eric, Dr. Eric Grimson is coming to the college on March 2nd to speak about innovation. The event is 100% free, so please sign up. It's on Eventbrite, and we've shared it on my social media. A number of us have shared it on social media, and it's on the TechUp's Facebook page as well.
Thank you for that, Counsel Ford. This gentleman is the godfather of innovation. So, I know there's a lot of people in the community questioning, what does that mean? What's that all about? Please come, and you'll be educated on that point. Thank you. Counsel Cernic?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, the past couple of weeks, I had numerous inquiries about the application for the smart city that Estevan did, which we all found out, came about in 2017. So, that being said, I just kind of ask, or I don't know how we could make a policy, that anything, let's say, the Innovation Council or the ECTV, anything that comes about that they're applying for, kind of be ran through council first before we find out about it after. So, just using that situation as an example, so.
Yeah, sure, we could, we can do that, Counsel Cernic. That was a little bit of a faux pas in that it was old news, it was bought forward again, but absolutely, before we make an announcement on the innovation side, or actually coming out of any of our committees, if it's important for the community, we'll make sure it comes to council first. Thank you for that. Go ahead, Counsel Frank.
Thanks, Your Worship. Couple fundraisers going on. Source Valley Theater's having Valentine's Day at Granby's tomorrow night for Valentine's Day, so husbands, if you haven't planned Valentine's Day, it's still not too late. Just contact the Source Valley Theater. They have the 8:00 p.m. seating is still available. The 6:00 p.m. is sold out. And then also, Creighton Lodge is having Family Feud Night, which is going to be a blast, and I have my table already, so. And that is coming up in April, April 22nd. Thank you, Counsel Vroba. So, please reach out to Creighton Lodge to get tickets for that, because it's going to be a great night, so.
Thank you, Counsel Frank. And as most of us men would recognize, it's the women in the relationship that do the work and most of thinking. So, I'm asking the men tomorrow, take your better half out for a lovely supper, and tell her how great she is, how intelligent and good-looking she is, and hopefully you will be rewarded.
Wow.
Okay, City Manager, anything else after that? Nothing? Okay. City Treasurer, anything after that? Nothing? Okay.
Definitely nothing.
City Clerk, definitely nothing. Okay, do we have a motion to move into committee? Thank you, Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Cernic. All in favor? Carried? Thank you. We stand adjourned.